I was asking for your patience, sorry for that. I'd like to call to order this public meeting of Jenkentown Borough Council, June 27, 2018. Thank you all for being here. Mayor Doug, would you please...
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
My pleasure. (inaudible) Mr. President, Bunker.
Here.
Councilor Macklin.
Here.
Councilor Connors.
Here.
Councilor Farrell.
Here.
President Penico.
Here.
Councilor Luger.
Here.
Councilor Holden.
I have to be excused tonight. And Councilor McGlon will be coming at 8:00.
Councilor Young.
I'm not here.
Oh, she has to be excused tonight. That was a wild opening night.
Councilor Whitby.
Here.
And Councilor Sulpita.
Here.
Madam President, you have a call.
All right, thank you very much. (inaudible) Bunker, do you see the payrolls and invoices?
Sure. May I ask the Council to approve payrolls dated May 24, June 7, and June 21st in the amount of $240,000, $240,193.37, and invoices totaling $326,934.48.
All right. Motion on the floor, do I hear a second? Okay, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Now we'll move to the presentations. (inaudible).
This is Resolution 2018-20 in recognition of Jack Miller and Joshua Jackson, our very own Jenkentown Chariots of Fire. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-20, recognizing Junior Jack Miller, who took sixth place in the state championship 3200-meter race, earning a sixth-place medal, as well as Senior Joshua Jackson, who took ninth place in the state championship 1600-meter race. Mr. Miller was also the district champion in the 1600 and the 3200 at the PIAA District One Championships, and Mr. Jackson was runner-up at the PIAA District One Championships in the 1600 and 3200-meter races. Congratulations.
Thank you. (applause)
Would you like to add something?
Just right here would be great. So, Jack and Josh, you know, they're the start of what's turning into a very competitive and track program in Jenkentown. It's a small team, and, you know, we're building, and we have such a small team, girls and guys, but we've accomplished so much. They have accomplished so much in terms of districts, states, as you've heard. These men are the epitome of hard work dedication and the definition of track stars. What I mean by track star, you know, the state qualifiers, the best of the best. These guys deserve a round of applause, which you've already done. And I say it because it's what I see every day in practice from these two. They're hard workers. They do what I say, and they question me, and I question them, and the record that we have is fantastic. You know, they're easy to teach, and I learn from them as well. But these two are great at running businesses and fantastic two of beings, and I want to thank the parents, family structure, you know, for the honor of coaching them. And I owe Jenkentown High, I've been to a lot, I've coached a lot of schools, charter schools, public schools, county schools, and I just want to end it by, I owe Jenkentown some of that stuff. Thank you.
(applause) Go on, Mr. President. We should go on, and then I will present you. There was a motion on the floor. Any questions or comments?
You're both red, right?
That's so unfair.
And so, you're there on color today.
I know, really. That's a big story.
Yeah, I think it's not a real victory.
It's totally a real victory, but you would have not lost by that much.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Okay, I feel very honored. I know both of you kids, and you're, whether you run or not, you're great examples of citizenship. Okay, stand up. Therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and all members of Jenkentown Borough Council, on behalf of themselves and the citizens of the borough, desire to publicly acknowledge Joshua Jackson and Jack Miller for their success, and to congratulate and express their appreciation for their determination and hard work in achieving this success. And this is presented to you today, and we just want to say thank you for making us proud and seeing what hard work helps people off. So, gentlemen, there you go. Congratulations, and congratulations on your win. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out, and we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Oh, I might also add, the two of these won in two at the Jenkentown Sunset. It's a bar. One in two.
Probably about 10 minutes.
(inaudible).
They also have a shot at cross-country of winning the state championship.
That is.
That's great.
No pressure.
No pressure. Thanks. All right. Now we have time for public comment. Yeah, we'll go ahead with public comment. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Randy Garvin, 99 Runnymede. I just have a few things I wanted to state for the record. I want to mention, first of all, that I have acquired through a right-to-know request, the heavily redacted invoices submitted by Sean Kilkeny Law for the expenses incurred by the borough in pursuit of the citation, in the prosecution of the citation against Peggy and Dave Downs. And between March, excuse me, between November of 2017 and March 27th of this year, the invoices record at least $5,500 paid out to Sean Kilkeny's law offices, just for those costs. Since that time, I don't know exactly what the borough has paid out to Mr. Kilkeny, but I have filed another right-to-know request, and I'm still awaiting to hear the invoice, to receive those invoices. And, but I have to conservatively estimate that so far, the borough is in it for at least another $6,000. It's likely much more, considering all of the hearings that Mr. Kilkeny's attorneys have been attending, and all the prep work, et cetera, et cetera. And for the sake of argument, this government, this local government, has spent probably at least $12,000 taxpayer dollars pursuing a citation with absolutely no credible evidence, and based on the accusations of a convicted felon and his wife. The fact that our government continues to pursue this concerns everyone who pays for the privilege of living here or doing business here. This council is wasting your money, and the only people who are winning in this case are the lawyers. And speaking of Sean Kilkeny and legal costs, a previous right-to-know request that I filed revealed the nature of Mr. Kilkeny's invoices for a period of time between the months of September 2016 and March 27, excuse me, March 2017. The invoices displayed at most four line items per month with a total amount and no itemization. This is a, was a typical Sean Kilkeny invoice for that period. Four lines. This is an invoice received by Abington Township for similar services from the law offices of High Schwartz. There are 12 pages here. I think anyone who's had any dealings with attorneys knows what a legal attorney's invoice usually looks like. Second, I continue to stream these live, I continue to livestream these meetings, there's a reason for that. There was an archive video that was brought to my attention that looked like it had an edit. Ann McCaffrey told me that it was not, that it was not an edit, it was a glitch. I've been working in graphic and video production for better than 20 years, I know an edit when I see one. If there's any evidence to the contrary, I would love to see that, but this kind of goes against, if it is indeed an edit, it kind of goes against the commitment to transparency that I've been hearing so much about for the last couple of years. And I do have, I do have an edit, I do have that slice of video, the edit. For the record, I also filed a right-to-know request for the audio recording, and it's a 10-second, it's a 10-second piece, if that, and it's simply Patrick Hitchens answering a question from Peggy Downs. Why that might have been removed, I don't know, but, and I don't really have time to sit through all the rest of the archive videos to double-check, but that's why I'm, that's one of the reasons why I'm still doing this. So, I just, I just hope that the commitment to transparency is a real one. Last week's, excuse me, council meeting was kind of going against that as well, there was no, there was no notice in social media, on the borough's website, and I did not receive an email to that effect. I found out through another resident, second and third had information that there was this special council meeting to which I was able to show up to, so I would ask you to please redouble your efforts. What we are asking is really not that hard to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and I'll just respond to say one thing, that we are committed to providing as much information as we possibly can, and many apologies for when that falls down. Are there any other public comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. This, we're gonna put a pause on our council meeting, we have a public hearing for ordinance number 2018-1, which has to do with medical marijuana grower/processor ordinance. So, we are proposing to amend our, our borough ordinances with this modification. Sorry about that. So, all right. The ordinance reads...
Wait, before we begin, Madam President, just make sure that we get the stenographer ready to go, so we can start with the hearing process. You are?
You're ready, we'll start the hearing process, go ahead.
If I may, so, for those who are here tonight, who might be unfamiliar, prior to the adoption of a formal ordinance, the municipality must engage in a public hearing of that ordinance. So, I'm going to place into the record a few documents, just to show proof of publication, as well as the ordinance itself. There's a stenographer here who will be taking down any comments that are made, either by council or by the public, with regard to the proposed ordinance. So, I'm gonna mark as B1, this is a notice of publication, that the ordinance was publicized, as well as tonight's hearing for this ordinance. I'm gonna mark as B2, an actual copy of the ordinance, the draft ordinance itself, which is ordinance 2018, and the title reads as follows, "In ordinance of the borough of Jenkentown, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, amending the zoning ordinance to define and establish new use classifications for medical marijuana grower/processor uses to permit medical marijuana grower/processor uses in the G Gateway Commercial District, repealing all inconsistent ordinances, providing separability clause, and providing an effective date." And I'm also gonna then mark as B3, this is a letter dated June 26, 2018, which is a letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, specifically Principal Planner Marley Vice, who actually, believe, is here with us tonight. This is a letter to Mr. Locke with regard to the proposed ordinance and the recommendation of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, which reads as follows, "The Montgomery County Planning Commission supports the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments without comment, as we have not identified any significant issues." So, with those three documents having been identified, if Madam President would like, I'd be happy to give you a brief summary as to what purpose the ordinance is serving, but otherwise, I turn over to the council, have any questions or comments.
Should we read the ordinance, the motion, ahead of time, and then have comments?
Oh, no, so, as a part of the public hearing portion, you just merely discuss the purpose the ordinance is serving, as well as any questions that either the public or council may have about it. It's really just an informational session, so everybody can hear the vote itself, if it is to occur tonight, what happened outside of the public hearing itself, if it does not happen during the public hearing.
Well, then, I'll turn it over to Councilor Bunker.
Sure, thank you very much, Madam President. We've discussed this a couple of times before, and it's, we voted on advertising and everything. This is to just make our law consistent with a number of neighboring communities. We initially passed the ordinance and discussed a dispensary and failed to mention growing and processing facility, so this corrects that and puts us, makes us consistent with the neighboring towns, as the laws around these things are becoming, kind of solidified.
Would you like to add a comment?
No, I would agree with everything Mr. Bunker had said. In drafting it and in committee comments, we tried to actually model it off of what other municipalities are doing, so, what's listed here is consistent with what other municipalities have adopted for themselves.
Great. So, now I invite members of the public to comment or ask questions about this modification.
Yes. So, have we, have Alexandria, Kiloq, 14, read it? Have we decided to actually have a dispensary? Or is this just to say, like, if we decide to have a dispensary, these are the rules? Right.
The latter is correct. So, essentially, what it's trying to do is, currently in the ordinance, there's no specific definition for grower/processors. For anybody who's familiar, Pennsylvania has adopted or has now allows for medical marijuana, but under the state law, you actually have to get it, get the product from a dispensary, and it is grown and processed at a separate facility called a grower/processor. They cannot be in the same location. So, and typically, if you think about it, you wouldn't want a dispensary necessarily in the same place as a grower/processor. Therefore, this is just basically trying to create a definition for what it means to be a grower/processor, and then placing it in the Gateway Community, I'm sorry, the Gateway District as the most appropriate place for that type of use, should an applicant come forward and want to use, do that.
Yes, would you state your name and address?
Kristy Leach, 434 Leedham Street. What specifically is the Gateway District?
Actually, it's on that map, right there.
What color is it?
Maybe not.
Wait, no, it's 210. Just 611? Oh, 611, yes.
It's also the entrance over to South Bridge, where the high rises are.
Okay.
Not Beaver Hill, but like 101 Greenwood.
Okay, so like the main artery of town?
Not all, only the ends of it.
The ends, not the full. It's kind of like, oh, here, you're entering in, and Jenkentown, you can see it on the map out there, it's interesting, because the, both ends of 611, Jenkentown goes this way, and Abington comes this way, so it's not a clear cut across the street, it's on a slam. So, you can see it, like, for instance, the UPS store is in our gateway, whereas... Acne is not. Acne is not, that's in Abington. And the same with, I know, yeah, this was years ago, it's not our fault. And then, the, that yellow cleaners is in Abington, but across the street, the Strawberry Bridges building is in Jenkentown. So, it's that kind of... So, a shift, that, like, four points of that gateway? A little bit, a few blocks down, but it's not in the middle of town, and the other one you said was Greenwood?
The other one is, as you come into the Strawberry, 101 Greenwood.
Oh, yes.
101 West, but not Beaver Hill.
But not Beaver Hill, so you're going around that loop. And it was too big. Where the, okay.
There are actually two big office buildings down there, in that gateway.
And if I could just interject?
Thank you for that question.
If I could just interject, as a reminder, everything's being recorded by the stenographer, so please wait till one person finishes talking, because it's very difficult for him to copy down everything you're saying, as well as council.
Sorry about that, I was guilty of that myself. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I have a question. So, the growing, is, are there parameters around, is it grown outside, can it be grown in your, like, echo? Are there state statutes that we have to follow in terms of housing, this kind of thing? And is there a component that locks it down? Or is it...
That is entirely correct, Madam Mayor. So, first, a grower/processor under this ordinance, and even if it wasn't listed there, has to already comply with the stringent standards that the state already requires for anybody who has granted a grower/processor license. For example, I couldn't just want to open up my own grower/processor, I would actually need a state license first, and I would have to comply with...
Before you come here, okay.
Well, I could do it as a part of the application process, but I couldn't actually engage in the business until I received a license from the state. But in addition to those state requirements, and as discussed as a part of the committee, and some of the things the committee wanted to make sure they addressed was, for example, making sure that it's an indoor activity. For example, one of the proposed, I'm sorry, one of the proposed requirements is, quote, "The medical marijuana growing/processing facility must operate entirely within an indoor, enclosed, and secure facility. Any odor must be managed by ventilation and exhaust equipment with applicable filtration or similar equipment, so that any odors are effectively confined to the interior of the building. There shall be no emission of dust, fumes, vapors, odors, or waste into the environment that can be seen, smelled, or otherwise perceived beyond the facility."
I have one more question.
Yes.
I'm a little concerned about the water for such growing. I would issue issues, how do we get around that?
In a real preliminary meeting, one of the, one of the people that are going to actually apply to the state, and they put distillers on the roof, they reuse the water, they're basically no use of the water, they're growing.
So bottled water?
They reuse it, they clean it and reuse it.
Refiltering.
Yeah.
Thank you. Another question.
This is a drug, how is going through any type of, how do you have to check to make sure that that is a good product? I mean, what is, if you see it, it's gonna go through, how are we as a, you know, we're selling this product, and this product's being sold in this town? I work in the pharmaceutical industry, you just can't go ahead and make penicillin, you say that as a whole, and reducing this as a...
Highly regulated. It's a highly regulated industry by the state, that would be a Jenkentown.
I understand, but what, I mean, what do we have, I'm sorry, thank, I'm thinking a little bit, what do we have to do? What does the, what does the state require in terms of facility like that? Where would we put a facility like that? I was wondering, where would a facility, a growing facility like that be?
Well, and so that's exactly what this ordinance is trying to accomplish. So, by law, if the state has provided or allows for a particular type of use or business to operate, every municipality is supposed to provide some location within their municipality so that that business can operate. Currently, there is no specific definition within the Jenkentown Borough zoning code that addresses specifically grower/processors. So, therefore, the options are either, one, to adopt an ordinance such as this one, to actually specifically say, this is where the grower/processor is, and this is where the municipality feels it is best located within its borough. The second option would be to interpret its existing code, so as to identify a particular use that might fit, or is a similar category. The committee, and I would say probably with the recommendation of the solicitor's office, I think correctly went with the, we should really identify what these are, and we should say, this is where they're gonna be, if they're gonna be in our community.
Yeah, we want to get out front, and rather than make personal dissuasion for the right to put it somewhere we didn't want.
Oh, I agree.
So, this pretty much sticks it all over the road, that either in the town, and keeps it away from housing as much as possible.
Randy, do we have examples of other places who have, have had one of these in their town, like, where, is it, is it office space, is it industrial?
So, my understanding is it very typically goes into warehouse space, but it certainly could go into, if it were cheap enough, office space.
Really cheap?
The house they have to pay, right?
Yeah, the place is right.
This is conjecture, but if I'm gonna set up any kind of factory, and I can get space for nine bucks a square foot over here, and 23 bucks a square foot over here, I'm putting it for those nine bucks a square foot, and it can't, it's not retail stuff, it all has to be kind of, no signs, no smells, armored trucks moving the stuff around, no retail market.
Only certain people can get in there, it's locked down, is that part of the statute?
Absolutely.
Not only is it part of our, not only is it part of our ordinance, also state law places very stringent security standards, including stringent security standards on transporting the product from the grower/processor facility to the dispensary. Again, the grower/processor facility, you could not show up there and purchase your medical marijuana. Nobody can use or consume medical marijuana on-site, they have to transport it to a dispensary, and the state already requires that the dispensary, the grower/processor be able to track from seed to...
Seed to sale.
Seed to sale, every single one, so that there can be no confusion or question as to what is going on.
And everything is taken place inside the facility, the gates open, the truck goes in, the gate closes, it takes place inside, and then it opens, the truck leaves, outside gates open.
So, you're not, you're not even loading it in the parking lot? Okay.
Everything is inside the facility.
Now, if I can add, under section two, letter I, no pictures, photographs, drawings, or other depictions of marijuana, or marijuana paraphernalia shall appear on the outside of any medical marijuana growing/processor facility, or any sign associated therein. So, you know, that really, there'd be no way of knowing what's being grown in that building, and what's coming out of it, so it's very nondescript and very insecure.
The vehicle is loud.
Listen to it.
Madam President?
Yes.
Oh, I think it, you may not know this, but there are a number of pharmaceutical distribution places around here, basically mail-order pharmacies, that dispense various narcotics, and I think from what I'm reading, it would be a very similar set of, and you don't know them, because you don't see them, but they're there, and they're very large, and I used to work in one of those. So, the point is that it is, they're there, but you don't see it, and that's the reason, as I understand it, they would do it this way. It's there, but you don't really see it from the outside.
Do you have another question?
I have one question. How much money do, what's this take?
It grows on trees.
I actually literally want to know, I mean, it seems like it would, if you're going to different dispensaries, and it's medical...
Do that.
Yes, would you say your name and address?
Chris Leach, 434 Leedham Street. What specifically is the gateway district?
Um, actually, it's on that map right there.
What color is it?
Maybe not.
Gateway, no, yes.
It's the two and.
Just 611?
Oh, 611, yes.
It's also the entrance over to South Bridge where the high rises are.
Okay.
Not Beaver Hill, but like 101 Greenwood.
Okay, so like the main artery of town.
Not all, only the ends of it.
The ends, not the full. It's kind of like, oh, here, you're entering in. And Jenkentown, you can see it on the map out there. It's interesting because the, um, both ends of 611, Jenkentown goes this way and, um, and Abington comes this way. So it's not a clear cut across the street. It's on a slam. So, um, you can see it, um, like, for instance, um, the UPS store is in our gateway. Whereas, um.
Acme is not.
Acme is not, that's in Abington. And the same with, I know, yeah, this was years ago, it's not our fault. And then, uh, the, um, that yellow cleaners is in Abington, but across the street, the Strawberry's building is in Jenkentown. So it's that kind of, um.
So a shift that, like, four points of that gateway?
Um, a, a, a little bit, a few blocks down, but it's not in the middle of town. And the other one you said was Greenwood?
The other one is, as you come into South Bridge.
Right down by the bridge.
101 Greenwood.
Oh, yes.
101 West, but not Beaver Hill.
But not Beaver Hill. So you're going around that loop.
For that big move, that big, where the, okay.
There are actually two big office buildings down there in that gateway.
And if I could just interject.
Thank you for that question.
If I could just interject, as a reminder, everything's being recorded by a stenographer, so please wait till one person finishes talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because it's very difficult for him to copy down everything you're saying as well as council.
Sorry about that. I was guilty of that myself. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I have a question. Um, so the growing is, are there parameters around, um, is it grown outside? Can it be grown in your, like, equity? Are there state statutes that we have to follow in terms of housing, this kind of thing? And is there a, um, a component that locks it down? Or is it?
That, that is entirely correct, Madam Mayor. So first, a grower processor under this ordinance, and even if it wasn't listed there, has to already comply with the stringent standards that the state already requires for anybody who has granted a grower processor license.
Okay.
For example, I couldn't just want to open up my own grower processor, I would actually need a state license first, and I would have to comply with.
Before you come here, okay.
Well, I could do it as a part of the application process, but I couldn't actually engage in the business until I've received a license from the state. But in addition to those state requirements, um, and as discussed as a part of the committee, and some of the things the committee wanted to make sure they addressed was, for example, making sure that it's an indoor activity. For example, um, one of the proposed, I'm sorry, one of the proposed requirements is, quote, "The medical marijuana growing processing facility must operate entirely within an indoor, enclosed, and secure facility. Any odor must be managed by ventilation and exhaust equipment with applicable filtration or similar equipment so that any odors are effectively confined to the interior of the building. There shall be no emission of dust, fumes, vapors, odors, or waste into the environment that can be seen, smelled, or otherwise perceived beyond the facility."
I have one more question.
Yes.
I'm a little concerned about, um, the water for such, um, growing. I would issue issues, how to get around that.
In a real preliminary meeting, um, one of the, one of the people that are going to actually apply to state municipal processor, and they put distillers on the roof, they reuse the water, they're basically no use of the water, they're growing.
So bottled water?
They reuse it, they clean it and reuse it.
Refilter.
Yeah.
Thank you. Another question.
This is a drug. How is going through any type of, um, how do you have to check to make sure that that's a good product? I mean, what is, if you see it, it's going to go through, how are we as a, you know, we're selling this product, and this product's being sold in this town? I work in the pharmaceutical industry, you just can't go ahead and make pen silk instead of a hole, and reducing this as a.
Highly regulated.
Yeah, no, I know, it's highly regulated. It's a highly regulated industry by the state. That would be a Jenkentown.
I understand, but what, I mean, what do we have, I'm sorry, thank, I'm thinking a little bit. Uh, what do we have to do? What does the, what does the state require in terms of facility like that? Where would we put a facility like that? I was wondering, where would a facility, a growing facility like that be?
Well, and so that's exactly what this ordinance is trying to accomplish. So, uh, by law, um, if the state has provided or allows for a particular type of use of business to operate, every municipality is supposed to provide some location within their municipality so that that business can operate. Currently, there is no specific definition within the Jenkentown Borough zoning code that addresses specifically grower processors. So therefore, the options are either, one, to adopt an ordinance such as this one, to actually specifically say, this is where the grower processor is, and this is where the municipality feels it is best located within its borough. The second option would be to interpret its existing code so as to identify a particular use that might fit or is a similar category. The committee, and I would say probably with the recommendation of the solicitor's office, I think correctly went with the, we should really identify what these are, and we should say, this is where they're going to be if they're going to be in our community.
Yeah, we want to get out of front of it rather than make personal dissuasions for the right to put it somewhere we didn't want.
Oh, I agree.
So this pretty much sticks on all over the road, that either in town, and keeps it away from housing as much as possible.
Do we have examples of other, um, places who have, have, um, had one of these in their town? Like, where, is it, is it office space, is it industrial?
My understanding is it very typically goes into warehouse space, but it certainly could go into, if it were cheap enough, um, office space.
Really cheap?
The house they have to pay, right?
Yeah, the place is right.
This is conjecture, but if I'm going to set up any kind of factory, and I can get space for nine bucks a square foot over here, and 23 bucks a square foot over here, I'm putting it for those nine bucks a square foot. And it can't, it's not retail stuff. It all has to be kind of no signs, no smells.
And the laws say it's locked.
Carved trucks moving the stuff around, no retail.
Only certain people can get in there.
Yeah.
It's locked down, is that part of the statute?
Absolutely.
Not only is that part of our, not only is that part of our ordinance, also state law places very stringent security standards, including stringent security standards on transporting the product from the grower processor facility to the dispensary. Again, the grower processor facility, you could not show up there and, and purchase your medical marijuana. Nobody can use or consume medical marijuana on site. They have to transport it to a dispensary. And the state already requires that the dispensary, the grower processor be able to track from seed to.
Seed to sale.
Seed to sale. Every single one, so that there can be no confusion or questions to what is going on.
And, and everything is taking place inside the facility. The gates open, the truck goes in, the gate closes, it takes place inside, and then it opens, the truck leaves, outside gates open.
So you're not, you're not even loading it in the parking lot? Okay.
Everything is inside the facility.
Okay. Now, if I can add under section two, um, uh, letter I, no pictures, photographs, drawings, or other depictions of marijuana, or marijuana paraphernalia shall appear on the outside of any medical marijuana growing processor facility for any, um, sign associated therein. So, you know, that really, there'd be no way of knowing what's been grown in that building and what's coming out of it. So it's very nondescript and very insecure.
It'd be like a lab.
Exactly.
Madam President?
Yes.
Oh, I think it, you may not know this, but there are a number of pharmaceutical distribution places around here, basically mail-order pharmacies, that dispense various narcotics. And I think from what I'm reading, it would be a very similar set of, and you don't know them because you don't see them, but they're there and they're very large. And I just worked on one of those. So the point is that it is, they're there, but you don't see it. And that's the reason, as I understand it, they would do it this way. It's there, but you don't really see it from the outside.
Do you have another question?
I have one question. How much money do, um, face, what does it take?
It grows on trees.
I actually literally want to know, I mean, it seems like it would, if you're going to different dispensaries, um, and it's medical.
We'd love, we'd love one in town.
One at a time, I'm just going to.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a hearing, I'm just going to pull it back to its formal.
It appears that they're very, very profitable, and the tax benefits for the borough should one decide to locate here, I think would be great.
So that said, um, it does sound like, this has been good, I've appreciated all the questions, um, that we might have council further consider, um, this ordinance. And it sounds like we have a little bit more research that we want to do. So I would like to hold off on this vote until the July meeting. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, if I could, well, first, I would actually like to mark another exhibit that was handed to me, and I apologize, I should have done this earlier. This I'm going to mark as B4. This is a memorandum to Jenkentown Borough Council from the Jenkentown Borough Planning Commission dated October 26, 2018, with regard to review of this specific ordinance. And, uh, the, the plan, June 26, 2018, so yesterday. The planning commission makes the following comments or notes with regard to the proposed ordinance. The planning commission reviewed the ordinance at the June 19, 2018 meeting. Following public comment and discussion, the planning commission voted to support the ordinance and recommend that Borough Council adopt ordinance number 2018-1. So I'd like to mark that as B4 into the record. And with regard to your other comment, Madam President, again, council doesn't actually have to vote at the public hearing itself. You can vote at a, at a future date. It, the, the NPC simply requires that you hold a public hearing so that public comment can be made. It did sound like tonight there was a public comment with regard to a question about where these specific locations were. So perhaps.
I have one more.
Hold on one second. So perhaps maybe council wants to go back, and maybe the resident wants to go back and take a look at it and provide further comment to council, so maybe at a future date you would want to vote on this. But at least you have satisfied the public hearing requirement under the NPC.
All right, thank you. And we have one more question. Yes?
Disposal, storage, you know, how, you know, these chemicals that will build, that will plant, how will that be handled? Seepage into the ground?
I, I believe that's actually, uh, addressed both by state law as well as the sections within the code. I would, again, cite to the provision I cited too earlier about, quote, "There shall be no emission of dust, fumes, vapors, odors, or waste into the environment that can be seen, smelled, or otherwise perceived beyond the facility."
And then how would, would, would it be removed from the, I guess there's a process, so I mean, I just think that should be explained to the community as you move forward, because I think that's important.
And if I could also read.
To answer that question.
If I could also read it under subsection F, "Any medical marijuana growing processing facility shall ensure adequate security of the site, including by now limited to inventory control, the safety and security of those lawfully on site, the safe disposal of refuse, and providing for exterior lighting during hours of operation without creating a nuisance by the lighting on adjacent properties."
Thank you.
So with that.
Any other questions?
So if there's no further questions or comment from council or the public, I would ask that this hearing be closed.
Thank you very much.
And council, for those members of the public who are here, you've heard that council's going to deliberate further on the proposed ordinance and may at a later date vote to adopt it.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll move.
Yes. I would anticipate that we're going to discuss this at the, um, next, um, Admin and Finance meeting for people who are interested in following.
Yes, if it can be on the agenda for Admin and Finance to follow.
And before we go off the record, the engineer did make a good point. For those interested members of the public, and because there were specific questions, please be aware, this is just creating a use. So any individual or applicant who comes forward and wants to do this use would still have to go through the standard land development process, and may have to gain further approvals from the municipality, so you'd be able to hear about what's going on.
And do I recall, I can't find my text of it, is it a conditional use?
As it's written, it's not, and that was one thing I was going to bring up as we discuss it in more detail. Because I want to ask if it could be made a conditional use, so we.
The pros and cons of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
And that's another issue you can discuss.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we are finished with that portion of the hearing. So next on the agenda, I'm going to ask our solicitor to please, um, make a comment about the Jenkentown 2035 plan. And we can take the public comment on this plan. I want to thank the steering committee. I noticed that there's one person in the room. I don't know if there are more. Pardon me for not having the list right in front of me. I know there's Trish here as a member of the, oh, President Miller, oh, and Jim Rose. Right. I'm looking for my list. Marley, do you have that list? What page is it on? I know the committee names aren't here on this.
It's on the acknowledgement page.
It's on the back cover. On the back cover. I mean, the front cover, I'm sorry.
Back.
Oh, it's so tiny, I didn't even, I can't even read it. Okay, here we go. I'm going to read the names of the Jenkentown, um, Borough Comprehensive 2035 Steering Committee. This committee was chaired by Laurie Durkin, who was Borough Council member at the time. Jonathan Wilt was co-chair from the Highway Theater. Stephanie Bararty, who was from, at the time, the Jenkentown Environmental Advisory Committee. Michaela Casey was a student representative. Maya Chee from school board. Joseph Connolly, Jenkentown Fire Chief at the time. Al D. Valentino, Jenkentown Police Chief. Mayor Ed Foley, former Mayor Ed Foley. Carolyn Hirsch from Lindy Properties. Sandy Hall from Grace Presbyterian Church. Manager George Locke. Jeff Lustig from Midgard Properties. Kimberly McGlonn from council. Trish President Miller from Discote Gallery. Rick Pescator from Recreation Board. Ethan Riley, Jenkentown resident. James Rose from Planning Commission. Myself from Borough Council. Dr. Timothy Wade, former superintendent of schools. And then Montgomery County Planning, um, Planning Commission staff, Marley Weiss and Maggie Dobbs, with help from Sarah Richardson and Troy Woodyard. So that was the group of people who met and did lots of talking and thinking and planning on this wonderful plan, which is available to you to read on our website. There's also a paper copy on the counter, and paper copies at the, at the library for review. Are there any comments? People would like to stand and make comments about this? Yes?
James Rose, 513 Leedham Street. I'd also like to add to that, that there was an incredible, uh, public awareness and big turnouts at all the events we had as this master plan was developed, which was very gratifying that the community was so involved with it. So I'd just like to add that.
Thank you so much. Trish, do you want to add anything? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Not really. It was my pleasure, and I think it's an important mark. And, you know, my big word is implementation. I'm just hoping that we move in that direction.
Thank you. All right.
So Madam President, if I may interject here, um, tonight, this was scheduled to be a public hearing. The solicitor's office had a chance to review, and I need to review a procedural question. It has nothing to do at all with the substance of the plan. In fact, I had a chance to speak with Marley prior to the meeting tonight, so I would encourage her, if she wanted to stand up and provide an overview of the program or make any comments or answer any questions. But the solicitor's office would actually ask that we not hold the public hearing for purposes of the adoption process tonight, but that we do that at a later, at a later time, so I can review a procedural issue that, that I have a concern about, so.
Thank you very much. And we will hold that off.
Okay.
Until a future date. I would like to remain open about which date we go ahead with that, because I will not be present for the July meeting. And I worked hard on this plan, too, so we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah, and with, with some of our plans, and I think we'd like to have the committee back again when we do have the public hearings, so that that can be reflected on the public record itself, at least for posterity and future generations to look back and see what hard work went into it.
Thank you. All right, so that does end this, the public hearing. Thank you very much. It's always nice to see you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move now to, um, our committee reports. Vice President Buckner, Admin and Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the report in your folder. There are a number of items on the agenda for tonight, there were grant applications, et cetera. And I'll draw your attention to one thing that we passed another audit, with flying colors, no funding, et cetera. So thank you to the professional staff, that was the, like, tools on this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, Building, Zoning, and Rebiotation, Counselor Farrell. Actually, you weren't attending for that meeting.
I was not, um, but I will, um, make sure everyone is aware that the Tucker Bell zoning hearing that was scheduled for tomorrow evening has been postponed or continued, rather. We don't have a date for that yet. I did send out a, um, a blast about that, and, um, people could have gone on Facebook and other, um, social media sites so that people are aware of that. And I know you also talked about putting some information on the school as well, so people are aware that that has been continued. And then we have a date for that. We will certainly get that out to the public as soon as possible.
If there's anything else you wanted to highlight? Yeah, I, I can't think of anything. And did you want to make some comments about that?
Yeah, and, and if I may interject, I was actually going to mention during the solicitor's report.
Why don't we do it now, since it's relevant?
Yeah. I, just so council is aware, I had received a telephone call from the ZHB solicitor, um, today, and he had informed me as a courtesy that, at least so the council's aware, a request came in from the applicant in order to continue the hearing. And apparently, a request also came in from counsel for the objectors, which would be Mr. Yano. And he also asked for continuous, because I believe Mr. Yano has a conflict tomorrow night, as he'll be at another ZHB, um, for there. And I'm actually quite positive of that, because I will see him there tomorrow night. So, uh, so I thought I would at least advise council, one, that I got the call from the ZHB solicitor, and so council's aware it was actually essentially a joint request by both the applicant and the objectors' counsel. And I don't know when it's going to be rescheduled, but they, he's giving me that person, that information to council on.
Throughout August, I think the school district had said, I mean, there are dates in August available, we don't know what at this point, so we'll see if we know that.
It's entirely up to the zoning hearing board when they want to have it. It's not up to us or our coordinator, so.
Right, yeah, it's more scheduling for the location, we're working with the school district, so we'll figure that out.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
But one other thing I would.
Go ahead.
Also, I want to appreciate Andrew Locke continuing the process of working with Glansman on the easement, so that the 2040 location grant can get, can get rolling. Part of that, uh, Southern Gateway project will take place on the Glansman property. So, um, so once we get that agreement squared away, we can start that project, which I'm excited about.
And, and we know with sadness the passing of Ray Glansman, so that was a minor, which I mean, we wanted to be respectful of the family's need to, to breathe and take some time. Um, I will add one other thing, and that is that a number of people have, um, contacted me about the Verizon utility pole removal. And we did discuss that at the beginning of our meeting. And our Public Works foreman, Mr. Riggins, has been working with Verizon. Slow progress is being made, but we actually have a whole chart of every single pole that needs to be removed. And, um, I guess what, about 30 were removed, um, after that first time that we called them up?
Uh, yeah, I think about 13 were removed after the first time.
Yeah.
Some of them, we still, we had unsafe situations around town where they removed the pole, and like a bot hole, or they didn't refill it with dirt. So what we did was, we got cold factories, I got two guys around around town, and the more unsafe poles that were around town, we pulled them to MNC. We still going around, if we see anything unsafe that they did, we are, we'll keep them tracked.
But it is Verizon's responsibility to restore the pavement wherever they have removed the pole.
That's correct.
So we're making, the borough is making a temporary remedy, um, but, for, for safety measures, but we need to, people, we will continue to press Verizon to remedy this situation. And, um, and we also have, um, told Verizon that, um, we need to see some progress on that work before any other work can take place in the borough by that company. So we're going to try to push ahead with that as much as we can. All right, public safety, Counselor Whitney.
Yes, Madam President. First of all, the minutes of the meeting were in your packet, we have one invited on the agenda. Nothing notable to this week, uh, this one, in terms of service eligibility, it speaks for itself.
Okay, any questions or comments? Thank you.
Madam President, I bring something up about the previous issue.
Sure.
I know we're trying to get poles removed. The one in front of my house needs replaced pretty badly. So would we be able to talk to Verizon about that? It's all right, because it's right next to their building, almost. So, and when they're replacing all the other poles, the guys had no reason, they didn't understand why they put, and that, so that's truly a personal thing, but it does affect my morals, I know.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, Public Works, Counselor Buckner.
Uh, thank you. The report is in the folder. I have one item on the agenda, um, specific to a letter of intent to, uh, General Asphalt, who will be, um, in regards to our paving, which will be placed by.
Thank you very much. Counselor McGlonn, I've just locked in the door, so, you know what, I'll move to, um, Community, Jenkentown Community Alliance, Counselor Farrell.
I've been unable to attend the last two meetings, two JCA meetings. The Arts Fest meetings are tied to this as well, so I don't know if Mayor Dobson has any updates on the Arts Fest.
I don't, I don't think so. I know, um, the, the date of the fest, just so we're all, um, I don't have it in my book, the date of the fest is September, um, it's on the top of my head, um, the 16th this year. And it's from 1 to 6, as per usual. I think things are moving along, um, pretty well. I know that, um, they feel that cooperation with the borough and with the police is, um, makes it so much smoother, and, um, they're just working, helping it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, and Counselor Golden is not here today. I know there was a meeting of the, of people with the Pennsylvania Municipal League, which is a membership, is there anything that you could just worry about that, Counselor?
Um, well, we had breakfast, and we learned a lot about, so we're up for, we've, we've had free year, I guess, right? Isn't that what it's been?
Yeah.
We're up, we're up for our renewal, we want to move forward in January, and it seems that there's a lot more things that we could be taking advantage of with the Municipal League that we're going to be, um, trying to do. I know one of the things was, that we had mentioned is that I guess we're all supposed to be receiving emails from them on a regular basis, and I don't know if anyone else is, but we want to make sure that we get our email addresses over to them, so we can all be kind of updated and what's going on. There's a lot of collaboration with other municipalities and the different speakers coming and things like that, so.
Okay.
It's a good thing for us to get an email.
Yeah, I actually am getting those emails, so I'll do something about putting the rest of you on those. I thought I was forwarding them often.
I'm curious what the cost associated with that membership would be.
Well, it was, you'll know exactly, it was like some deeply, it was discounted, and it was, I.
First year is free, the second year is 50%.
Yeah, one's 50%.
I think it's $1,200.
Something like that.
It was more than $1,000, but less than five or six. That's, that's as much as I remember. And we really said that we were going to see if we took advantage of. They have a whole ton of programs to help the professional staff and help the legislative state council do things, none of which are worth anything if you don't use them.
That's right, that's right. We wanted to make sure that we're going to be getting a good amount of return from what we spend.
Yeah.
I guess I'm curious though, how the rate we would consider paying for it, would we, would we use it, you know, if we haven't?
Yeah, I don't know.
And we probably provide legislative updates and give a sense of what's going on. And presumably that would replace our own searching for such information. If we used it.
Yeah, that is the context of the, I guess, their weekly emails that I've been getting and forwarding. And they also have a grant writing service, or not grant writing service, but a grant search service. So that may be useful to a applicant.
They seem to be sort of oriented towards much bigger municipalities, which is why they're studying cheap for us because they charge the population of the town. So we needed access to, we use it. Let's just wonder.
Thank you.
One thing I thought about using before would be find, a way to find communities with similar issues that we were facing, that we might not, you know, be able to find on our own, just through using their membership number.
All right, Councilor McLaughlin, can you give an update from the school district?
So as you guys know, the budget gap persists, and so it's a, it's an issue that comes up over and over again at school board meetings. And one thing that they're thinking about that is separate from the budget issue though, I think there's a perception that they're connected, is using some capital planning as an earmark for improvements to focus on security. So one of the things that the school community is interested in doing is building a vestibule to kind of ramp up the security of the campus. So the whole is to build an extension off the front of the building where the, where the link is, which is pretty common in Montgomery County. A lot of schools in Montgomery County have a vestibule area, and so they'd like to kind of pitch up with everyone else. And they're asking for the rural support and issues related to land development. So that's something that they'd like to move forward on as soon as possible. It's a little time sensitive. And their perspective, if they wait past August to begin, then it'll leave the school open during winter, and that's, that's obviously, that's an ideal. So that's something that we'll have to figure out how we can tackle them.
These are the, I'm sorry, it's going to be projected out there, so from what's the doorway now?
And then the goal would be that the greeter, greeters would sit in that space during the school day, and it'd have a level of, of the space between any, you know, anyone that's ever got a bit of an issue.
I believe that we have agreed that we will try to help the school district facilitate this project as quickly as possible. There was a request that we waive the land development. Are we ready to, are you ready to talk about that, or would you like to wait?
Let me speak to it. I spoke to our engineer.
Okay.
It is a project that would fit the bill for waiving land development. It's like 680 square feet being added to the building. It's going between existing vestibule and the double doors, their own front. And it won't extend out past where the loop is to go in. So the existing buildings will be way closer to West Avenue than this would be. There's not that much earth disturbance in 700 square feet. So it would be a good candidate to waive the land development, not the building permanent process, but the land development. And the engineer could provide more information for that and maybe recommendations for that during the committee meeting in July, so you could vote on it, counsel.
Based, based on the, based on the proposed addition, yeah, I agree. This is pretty much considered imminent. It is not anything major at all. In its nature, in nature, it is subject to land development, but of course, we can waive the land development process. They will have to stormy any zoning requirements that cannot be waived. And on the other land development requirements, maybe, you know, make sure that there's an existing, for example, stormwater issue to address as part of it, but you can absolutely waive the process, yes.
Yes.
Also, in the past, we have charged permanent fees to the school only in actual money spent, rather than just the flat percentage rate. I'd like to suggest that perhaps we do that as well.
I wonder if we can just go ahead and do that at this meeting? Yes.
If I may, I think a sketch in front of you, just to see the extent of it, and so we can nail down the scope. It is defined, and then you can act on that, rather than just a blanket, because we want to have a simple sketch.
Okay, very clear. All right, so we'll wait until we get that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I was going to say, we also might work a formal resolution, just so it's very clear what is being waived and what is still going to be required in the process, which is a confusion.
Very good. Thank you for your advice. I appreciate that. All right, anything else? Any other questions or comments?
Oh, and just one other thing, just to go to the beginning. They're also, they're doing this, we have just the bonfire, what's going to happen with that bonfire and the pole? Is there an issue about where it would be placed? And they made a decision last two weeks ago, I guess now, about two weeks here, meaning that it will be moved back to subdivision location. So it will not be near the residences where there was a concern last year, you know, we can move to the full location, which is for that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the engineers' report. Mr. Hassan, do you have anything else?
Madam President, my report is in your packets. I have nothing else to add, but I am ready to answer any questions you may have on items listed on the agenda, on the data required.
Anybody have questions? Solicitor's report, I know we put you in the beginning. Do you have anything else?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you for everything you've been doing. Mayor's report, Mayor Dobson.
The police chief is still recuperating from surgery. He asked me excuse to Monday night's meeting, and we thought, yeah, you need more recuperation. So he would probably be into work next week. He did ask me to emphasize and to thank Mr. Whitney for pushing forward the motion to advertise for the testing of the full-time eligibility list through civil service. This is to replace, firstly, it's to replace an officer who went to another municipality. And, and the money is already in the budget, the salary is already there. And just to remind everybody, an active civil service list is good for two years. So if anything comes up in the next two years, we can do that. But we do need council approval for civil service to move forward. So thank you very much for that. Also, the Fourth of July parade is going to be on, Fourth of July, at 11:30. And it starts up at the, right here, doesn't it? Town Square? Yes. So it's, it's a great parade, I mean, anybody who wants to come out is welcome. I will not be throwing potsicles, I'll be throwing duck eggs, however, so that the moms don't have to mess with, deal with them helps. And I love hearing them. But anyhow, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. So we'll move past Police Chief's report, unless anybody has anything from Chief CBLT. We wish him well. Public Works, Mr. Riggins, do you have anything for us?
Hello, do you, everybody? Our report, so we drop off some packages. I've had to answer any questions up this side.
Anybody have questions? All right, thank you. Manager Locke, any highlights from your report?
Madam President, my report is in your packet. Councilor Connors and I met with PICO. At this time, they state they will not be in the borough in 2018 or 19 for infrastructure work.
Ha! I'll keep it when I see it. Thank you for that, I'm sorry.
We did, I mentioned that in committee, we did make a deal with PICO. They're paving half of Clement where they had, we had recently paved it. When it was paved, a seam was down the middle of it that you really don't want. So it's a good candidate to pave half the road on. It's only two-year-old paving on the road. So they're going to pave half of Clement where they had disturbed it. We had made a deal with Abington on Rattle because we both, the border's very jagged on Rattle, who owns which cap of it, between New Bold and York. And our portion came to $40,000 included in traffic reinforcement strengthening. We met with PICO, and they have now agreed to reimburse us $10,000 of that for the, for the excavations they had made on Rattle last year. So we reduced our total cost to $30,000. I wanted to mention something. It's kind of difficult when you're talking about yourself, but I attended the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Annual Conference. I was presented with an award. I obtained my certified borough official designation. I worked on it for three years, many hours of training on all different types of things that you run into in this environment. There was eight of us that got the award this year. It was, it was a nice event. Engineer came out, celebrated with me.
Well, Manager Locke.
Assistance was welcome.
You're actually preempting a whole big speech that I was about to do.
Secrets, all right. I apologize.
No, I had hoped to have Representative McHarder come and acknowledge your achievements, but I will just read that you have been enrolled and completed the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Certified Borough Officials Program, and that this further advances your professional development to better help residents and local businesses find their home here in Jenkins Town. This write-up says, "You work hard in developing, implementing, and administering public policy and services that benefit the municipality and the residents of the borough. You have expertise in initiating projects and programs that enhance our communications, boost productivity, and promote a team-based work atmosphere that has helped the borough." And I, I just want to emphasize that because when I came on to counsel in 2006, we had, sadly, we had a manager that was really problematic in terms of interpretation. And Jenkins Town had a very bad reputation for not being business-friendly and for being very difficult. And that kind of reputation is really slow to dissipate. And there, I still occasionally meet a tradesperson who's interested in doing work in the borough, but is under this misperception that, you know, you won't get help from the borough hall. Fast forward through two managers, and Borough Council found ourselves needing an interim manager because of the sudden departure. And George was able to step in, and then he put himself forward in the search process, which a few of us were on that search committee that was conducted extensively by council. George was selected from a large pool of candidates, and his strengths were seen as his attention to the zoning code and how it can have an effect on the growth of the community, his ability to reach out and establish positive relationships in challenging situations, including developing relationships with neighboring boroughs, which was really important to council and which had not been done, and George's commitment to creating a constituent and business-friendly environment. George has over 25 years of municipal experience and has taken the time to grow and pursue this professional development through classroom trainings and through webinars. And I just, we really appreciate your, the effort that you have made to get this additional education and to stay up to date with the most current revisions to code and to municipal laws and guidelines. And thank you very much for the work that you've done.
Thank you. Can I add one thing?
Please.
George, you do such a remarkable job of getting this borough money and using your team and pushing them and encouraging them to get this borough money to grant. And that cannot be under, it can't go on in dollars. You do so much, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, that took over your manager's report, but is there anything else that you want to?
I have nothing else, unless anybody has any questions.
Anything else? All right, we'll move now to the Order of Business, and so, okay, item five, Vice President Bunker, the small water grant.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve payment to National Water Main Cleaning Company in the amount of $32,162.45. This project addressed the rehabilitation of one of the two drainage basins within the borough that occasionally experiences exceedances, specifically running need to have new drainage basin. Rehabilitation methods include spot repairs, cure-in-place pipe lining, root control, and brack. This is just pay for work already done.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Just drop off. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-17, requesting a DCED flood mitigation program grant in the amount of $500,000. The total estimated construction cost for the entire project is $801,048.80. We're asking this grant to come from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the improvements to the storm sewer improvements Cedar Street. This is the, in fact, Cal, perhaps you'll remember, it's 14 acres of drainage or something like that?
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's over 10 million acres of drainage, so that is, everything is coming into an area as we identify as a basin. And then it is trying to discharge on that and flow down and all that's being extracted.
And it all, it's right at the bottom of that dip in Cedar Street, and damage to people's cars and houses and everything.
This is a 100 block, I believe, or the?
100.
So what we're trying to do is split up the drainage areas, concentrate it in the long low area, so it is better.
And we'll be seeking, and we'll be seeking additional grants to try to cover the other 300,000. But this is a chance to.
Relate for the neighbors. Oh, sorry, relating to the heavy.
Yeah, it's been awful.
So there's motion on the floor, and one for a second?
Second.
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19, requesting a Montgomery County local shared grant in the amount of $43,815. The total estimated construction cost for the project is $52,895 plus $4,000 additional engineering fees, for a total project cost of $62,420. This will come from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for demolition of existing buildings in preparation for future parklet park located up, located on Cedar Street.
All right, one for a second? Are there any questions or comments?
No, the gap will be out of our cap of progress. So this, and this is just for demolition. There's another grant going on to get material final plans for what the park will be. And then with those plans, we're going to seek another grant to pay for the installation of the park. But this is just to tear down the folding garage, just to get other buildings up there. I think leveled and smooth and break it.
Yes, and some spool more.
So it's a little more than just the down, but this will just get us back to you.
I know we're doing a lot of project, and I'm really excited that we're moving forward with the park and that we're going to be, you know, this progress will be obvious upwards in the community, but this is something we're still very much so committed to and very much so excited about.
Good, thank you. All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Councilor Connors, you're up.
I make a motion to issue the intent to award letter to the apparent low bidder General Asphalt, contingent upon the contractor satisfying the required bonds, insurance, and any subcontractors required responsible contractor certification.
All right, there's a motion on the floor and a, or a second? Second. All right, any questions or comments?
I have a question for our solicitor. As I was reading through the bids, I noticed, well, I'm now related to the Amnesia, so I'll just accuse myself of it. Doesn't matter.
This Amnesias have nothing to do with this. This is General Asphalt.
Okay, very good.
So if you're, if the Amnesias are not General Asphalt, you do not need to accuse yourself. But I vote on General Asphalt because you have no interest whatsoever.
Thank you very much. All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Councilor Whitney.
Yes, Madam President. Civil Service Eligibility List. I make a motion to advertise testing and full-time applicant eligibility list with the Jenkins Town Police Department as per the Civil Service Commission.
All right, questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. And finally, Vice President Bunker.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-21 pertaining to the ARLE grant in the amount of $350,000, written by Kenone Associates on behalf of the Jenkins Town Borough. This is a 0% match grant. I've pointed that out several times. And this is to go together with Cheltenham and Abington Townships to upgrade the intersection of Washington Lane and Township Line Road. of Washington Lane and Township Line Road. Our total expense to help with grant writing will not exceed $1,000 for $350,000 to grant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Thank you, George, and I'm going to.
Thank you very much for catching it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Is there any new business that needs to come forward? All right, I'd like to move that council adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of real estate, and then we will come back into our regular session to conclude the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?